I don't need to.
I even work for the services.
Shirt and top, it's like you have a uniform.
And saying, I kept saying to them, clients don't want you to look like them. They want you to look like you have some authority. For God's sake, you're an attorney. You spent all that money. Okay.
Said go, he said you can go.
Not waiting for anybody?
No.
Thirty seconds. All right. Now we're good, right? The August thirteenth meeting of the Easthamfield Township Plan and Commission comes to order. First thing on the agenda, if you'll join me, was standing in pledging the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item of agenda is the approval of the minutes for the July ninth meeting. Comments, questions, or corrections?
Chairman Anne, I reviewed the minutes. I didn't see any corrections. I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
You want a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Mr. Roy, seconded by Mr. Caldas. All in favor to accept? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted. First item is the DL Holdings Final Plan Township number twenty-four fifteen point oh two. Anyone here?
Kevin with DM Surveyors and Derek from.
Ben, that's a speaking to the, thank you.
Kevin with DM Surveyors and with me is Derek from Melvin Weaver and Sons. There you can see the project site is twenty-one acres at twenty-two thirteen Lee Brook Road. Zone rural business. The owner is DL Holdings, but Melvin R. Weaver and Sons Business is located on the tract. They, to the north, east, and west is surrounded by agriculture and then across the road is industrial uses. Down along the lower portion of the page there, you can see is a stream and the associated floodplain. On the site, there are two buildings, one near the front, which houses the office and warehouse, and then a warehouse in the back. There's an access drive that comes onto Lee Brook Road that was approved. There was a land development plan done for this site, which had removed the old offices up front and combined them with that front warehouse, expanded that, and then put in the approved access drive and so forth. The sewer is public sewer, so there's, the connection's already made, and then it's on lot water. The project that we're here for this evening is the expansion of the warehouse. You can see the darker area between the two existing warehouses. A portion of the front one will be removed and then there'll be a connection made. So basically joining the two warehouses into one provides for some additional warehousing for the company, allows them to get some off-site product onsite. And then down closer to the middle of the page, I guess, they're looking at a truck garage at that location. The loading docks you can see will be added to the rear warehouse area facing the floodplain, similar to the existing ones. As far as stormwater, there was an existing detention basin on the tract. That was from, actually, there's several stormwater facilities. The one from the twenty-eighteen project is up closer to the road. That will remain in place as it is. Then the existing basin is located more near the truck garage. So that's going to be removed and there's a new basin that'll replace that, enlarge it, and it also gets the added water quality features. It's a managed release concept through DEP. So that's actually been reviewed by DEP. We're through our first review there and it's back. We're waiting for that MPDS permit to come through. I think the only other piece there is the, you can see a circle down there, the lower portion. That's an existing irrigation concrete vault that'll be removed as part of the project also. It's kind of a brief overview. We do have a review letter from DMA and kind of down to just the waivers and a few minor items. Or housekeeping, I guess, would be like the MOU, financial security, and then also actually having the MPDS permit issued.
Okay, do we want him to go over the?
Maybe if he could go over the modifications.
Modifications.
Yeah. First is an environmental impact study. Basically, we're requesting waiver there. We've provide, I think we've, felt like we provided the items needed. We did the floodplain study and actually worked with FEMA on that before this was submitted. The site's hooked up to public sewer, and this had been through a land development plan previously, so asking for that. And then the next two items are somewhat similar. One would be the curbing and the other would be improvements to Lee Brook Road. So we're asking for a deferral, kind of an extension of the deferral granted with the last project. And then the fourth would be the coverage over stormwater pipes. There's, there is a drainage way that goes through the site and that needed to be piped. So we needed to go with concrete pipe because we didn't have the one foot of cover below subgrade. So in lieu of a plastic pipe, if we had to cover, we switched it to a class four RCP, which provides the structure needed.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
The only question I'd ask is, does the existing access have appropriate site distance?
It would, yes.
Question or comments from the audience? I'm ready for a vote.
Chair, Chairwoman Anne, I would make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of the four modifications subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
And Chairman, Chairwoman?
I see.
Anne, I recommend, or I make a motion, we recommend to the supervisors approval of the final plan for the DL Holdings project, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second it.
That was you, Josh?
No.
No, don't, yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next one is the stormwater management plan for the blue-green connector trail improvements. And Good Drive, Harrisburg Pike, Roseville Road, a whole connector, I guess.
Right, right. Yeah, this is Brent Good with ELA Group. Thank you. This is phase one of the trail and it's a stormwater management plan, so it's a staff review and approval, but we're looking for a modification recommendation from you tonight. And the trail is, north is to the right side here of the sheet, and there's two sheets, but it extends from West Roseville Road to the north, crosses over Harrisburg Pike with HOP improvements with the signal for pedestrians and so forth. And then per an agreement with the township, Easthamfield Township, there at Woodcrest is an existing twelve-foot emergency access drive that will be used for our trail. So that agreement has already been recorded several years ago. As you may know, this project is very much supported by the township, meets a lot of your comprehensive plan goals for linear park recreation and so forth. So the overall trail in this area with that existing and the proposed on the old daycare center is about a half a mile. This portion is new and again, this is LGH's abandoned daycare center, which we have an agreement with them on the trail that's being amended for this newer alignment. The trail used to go along Good Drive, but this is a safer alignment, more preferable. As you may know, we recently, the team recently, in collaboration with Land Studies, did a new floodplain restoration there beside the previous Mennonite home. They're just downstream of the Harrisburg Pike. So the idea here is this trail is a portion of a grander, larger project of almost three and a half miles of trail. And in fact, we're also collaborating with the township there at Dora Park, which is currently under construction for our main, sharing our main trailhead in that location. But this location is a smaller trailhead with eight parking spaces proposed. And again, it's an agreement with Langston General Hospital Pen Medicine. But tonight, we're here again in front of you for a modification of the landscape buffer. And so we're the campus zone and we're up against the medium residential. And Nate, if you go to sheet eighteen is the landscape plan.
Take a minute if you want to keep.
Yep, no problem. And I'll just go over the, explain the buff, the modification we're requesting. So this is for what's called a buffer planning strip A, which needs to be twenty feet wide to specific planting specifications of the subdivision ordinance. And there's an example in the subdivision ordinance of that. But it gives some flexibility in that the supervisors with justification can give a modification or substitution for an alternate design. And so that's what we're looking at here. And so in correspondence with Scott Hayne, the township engineer, there's an existing significant hedgerow there already. Now we're removing some of those mature trees and half the trees are invasive species. So species such as black mulberry tree, tree of heaven, and amure honeysuckle shrubs. And so we're going to cut those down and remove them. And then we want to, we're proposing fifteen new native shrubs within the hedge area that can take more shade tolerant type shrubs. But in addition to that, and so we're going to maintain twenty feet from the property line of this hedgerow with a reinforcement of native shrubs. And these shrubs can get about ten feet tall and wide. And then we're proposing another fifteen feet of our own landscape design that correlates with the rest of our native planting design. All our plants are native plants, of course. With this particular project, there's a real promotion of education with students and the community with signage and so forth. We have a grant with DCNR for this part of the project. DEP is very positive on this project because of the restoration and the outreach and education. And so the area we're talking about is that lower left quadrant there. Again, Roseville Road would be on the, on the left side. There's a small trailhead with a kiosk and then benches, bike racks, and a kind of a exposed aggregate or specialized concrete paving there in that location. And, but the area we're looking at is that bottom left side where you can see the alternation of trees. And they'll be site-specific. In other words, they'll be moved accordingly as need be amongst the trees that are saved in there. And so overall, the buffer will be thirty-five feet wide. It's just that this specific planting arrangement isn't exact to planting buffer A, which has some more evergreen trees and so forth. And so, but the argument would be that it's still a very significant buffer. And the fact that the closest residence is about a half a mile away, let me double check that, about a quarter mile away, which is still about fifteen hundred linear feet away. So the closest residents are over near Route thirty, there by the old mill along Route thirty. And so there's other existing hedgerow buffers in between here and there. And so between the distance and this alternate design and the fact that this use is an accessory type use, in other words, not a big industrial use or anything of that nature. It's very more of a low-key type of use. We're looking for a recommendation to go to the supervisors for their approval of this modification. Any questions?
So this is all on LGH and the old Mennonite home property then?
This is only on LGH property. I might have confused you. The restoration was done. You kind of see the top view there. There's a lines, if you know where the law office is, and then you can kind of see that line going kind of angling sideways there. That, that's the Mennonite home property.
But it's, so it's not on their property then?
It's not on their property, but we do have, we do have easements, linear park easements with them as well. And actually, I will say, just to the far right of the sheet there, when we go over Harrisburg Pike, there is a little, a piece of trail that connects into that existing twelve-foot asphalt drive. That actually is in Mennonite Homes lands, but that's part of the linear park easement. And so we have the right to do that.
Okay.
So the project's been challenging in that it's not a rail trail. We already have an existing right-of-way. We've had to work with the homeowner, or the property owners to obtain these easements, but most have been very supportive. So again, tonight, it's, the plan itself is a stormwater management plan. It's a staff review approval. So I'm just looking for this one modification and recommendation to go to supervisors next week.
Did I hear you say Roseville Road?
West Roseville Road.
West Roseville.
That, that's in there between the old hospice and the old daycare center. That road goes, it's a dead-end road, but it's a public road owned by the township.
Isn't it Orville?
No.
That's Roseville.
Yeah.
Huh. Orville's on the other side of thirty.
Oh, well, yeah. It used to be, used to be, yeah. Used to be a road that got flooded all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Gentlemen? Any other questions?
And I would just say too, that Scott Hayne recommends approval of the waiver as well.
Did you say address it? Oh. Any issue with it?
Did you, did you address the buffer planning strip A question that DMA had?
Yes. Yeah, they, they wanted me to explain, give justification. So I provided a modification request with the justification. And it's pretty much what I've just explained to you. I do have a copy of it here, but I did submit that then to the township.
I wouldn't let him be here if he didn't.
Is that what you're looking for?
Take a motion?
Ms. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the modification waiver request number one for the blue-green connector trail phase one project township file twenty-three dash ten dot oh two, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
Motion by Mr. Caldas.
Well, I'll make a second to the motion.
With the second by Mr. Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman, I'm going to abstain from voting on this.
Going to abstain?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, we will abstain.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Brookside Phase Eight.
Hello, Kevin Ember from two. Also here tonight is Eric Scott, representing the App plant, who's twenty-seven oh one State Road. So just a brief overview. I know everyone on the PC is very familiar with the Brookside project as a whole at this point, and I think most of you were here when we were presenting the sketch plan for this specific phase eight a couple months ago. So we're here tonight for a recommendation on final phase eight approval, plus a handful of modifications and waivers. We have got a review letter from DMA and with recommendations on the waivers, a few they're recommending with conditions tied to HOP permitting. We've resolved most other plan comments at this point. There's a few technical items, which we feel confident we can address with staff with the remaining administrative items. So just a brief overview of phase eight is eighteen residential units. It's in the southeast portion of the overall tract within the campus zone. Sixteen of those units are proposed as sixteen are proposed as townhouses. And then there's an existing single-family house here in the corner, which is proposed as a two-family conversion. So there's, there's parking provided for those units with both surface spots, garage spots. Each of the, the units would have at least one garage spot and some covered parking spots behind garage space as well. There's a new stormwater management facility proposed as part of this specific phase, which would be an underground infiltration bed in this area of the parking lot. The walking trail also extends from phases to the west, closest being phase five, which was conditionally approved previously for an apartment building. There were some comments that we took into account from the PC and board previously to create more of a separation between the access drive for the residential units and the walking trail. So that has been revised, a little hard to see here, but there's a retaining wall now that separates the access drive and access to the units and parking. And then the walking trail would break off here and be on the low side of that retaining wall. So there is more of a separation, creates a little more safety there for people using the trail. As far as access, it's generally in the same spot as the existing driveway that serves the single-family home that currently exists. There are a few waivers, which I can go into detail if members would like, just related to grading and location of that. It's somewhat restricted due to the existing house. We have been able to flatten the grade a little bit from the existing driveway. And that we are going through a HOP permit process with PennDOT and have had some initial conversations with them on that configuration, which generally they were agreeable to. But we'll address any comments as they come up. As far as secondary access, there is a emergency access that combines with the walking trail here to the west again, which would connect up to phase five. There was a few remaining comments in the letter regarding timing of that. So that's something we'll just work through with staff as far as which phase may go first, if it's phase five is first or phase eight, and making sure there is access through to serve emergency access purposes as intended through the project. So I'll open up to any questions at this point on anything in the letter, or I can go through any of the modification waiver requests in a little more detail if you would like.
Do we want to pin it over the modification? Do you want to go down through the modification requests?
Sure. The first couple, I'll just touch on, they've been typical through the Brookside projects. So most of them you've seen before. A couple that are more specific to the, the proposed access drive, I'll give a little more detail. So just in the order that they appear in the DMA letter. Number one is just related to plan scale for some of our overall sheets, given the size of the project. We're showing those at a larger scale than fifty scale. Number two is related to sidewalks. Again, we're providing the walking trail within the site rather than sidewalks along the public road right-of-way. That has been intended through the life of the project. Number three is related to lighting of the walking trail. Again, that's not intended to be a twenty-four-hour trail just for safety reasons and because it does go behind some existing residences to the east. So we had requested a waiver of no lighting on the, the trail outside of the access drive. Number four is similar to improvements along a public right-of-way. Again, this has been granted through the project as far as providing access internally through pedestrian access and the internal access drives rather than improving Harrisburg Pike, which fronts on this portion of the, the property besides what would be required as part of the HOP permitting. That also is similar to number five, just a slightly different variation on improvement of a PennDOT street. Number six is, again, has been granted for other phases, is related to loading ratios of the drainage area to our subsurface stormwater facility. We're asking for slightly larger loading ratios, just given available room in this area with the floodplain restoration. We were limited in the size we could do our stormwater facility. And number seven and eight are again related to the, the access drive. So number seven is related to the access drive grade. The township has a requirement of providing an eight percent slope within the first forty feet. We're going by PennDOT standards, which allow for it. A greater change in grade, so we're showing a maximum grade of twelve and a half percent within the first forty feet of the right-of-way. And DMA had recommended granting this with condition of, you know, satisfying the HOP permit, and we are agreeable to that. And number eight was related to the access drive and its location along Harrisburg Pike. Again, we're kind of limited with the existing house and the configuration of that lot, Harrisburg Pike rises as you go west. So the grade situation would be more of an issue if we go west. So we're trying to stay on the, the east side of the, the property there. But we can't go any further east to align with the existing street just because of the, the property line and adjoining property. So again, we'll take into account any comments that PennDOT provides on that.
Questions?
Related to the waiver request for the slope, increased slope, what kind of algebraic differences do you have from the cartway cross-slope to the initial slope? PennDOT generally has some requirements with algebraic differences and those steeper slopes can create problems.
Yeah, so I believe that PennDOT requirement is max eight percent change in the algebraic. Yeah, so I believe that PennDOT requirement is max eight percent change in the algebraic difference. And coming off the shoulder of Harrisburg Pike, which I believe we are maintaining through the HOP permitting is approximately six percent. So we have a difference there of about six and a half percent of what we're proposing to the shoulder.
Okay.
But we're still waiting for PennDOT comments on the technical review of the HOP.
So just help me understand, but you're asking for up to twelve and a half percent slope on that driveway entrance?
Correct, yeah. Twelve and a half percent up to where it would intersect with the shoulder. Whereas the township requirement is within the first forty feet of, I forget offhand if it's from the right-of-way or from the shoulder, they want a maximum slope of eight percent. But we have to still get down to the grade of the existing house, so if we, you know, make it less slope there, it just gets steeper as we go further down the driveway.
That's gonna be a little incline. Are we gonna have site distance issues? Cause, you know...
Yeah, east and west, there's no site distance issues there. And we, the existing grade of the residential driveway is actually steeper than twelve and a half percent currently, so we're improving that, but obviously there'll be a little more traffic with the additional units proposed here as well.
No other questions? Anyone from the audience have questions? Come up and give, did you sign in?
Yeah.
Okay.
First of all...
Can you give your name and address?
JT Clevenger, twenty-six Harris, twenty-six ninety-six Harrisburg Pike. This is a very narrow piece of property. And as I understand it, y'all are asking for a setback of twelve and a half feet. You know, we don't have anything less than twenty-five feet of any setbacks, and this is up against a major highway. I mean, this isn't safe. This absolutely isn't safe. The sidewalk, well, I can't put, the sidewalk is right on the right-of-way of the road. And PennDOT, one of these days, is gonna increase that shoulder. I don't think they're gonna go to three-lane. That would be ideal, but right now they're gonna increase the shoulder. And the shoulder, a lot of people pass on the right side because there's a lot of people turning into those lots across the street. So there's a lot of passing on the right-hand side, including right there where this facilities are going, are trying to go. So, yeah, I don't know how you, is zoning gonna allow you to go twelve and a half?
That's what the existing house said, so that's what they're trying to make.
That house is, was built in nineteen, well, a hundred and seventy-five years ago. That road was dirt, probably, that. Probably. So it wasn't a fifty mile an hour road. I'm just saying it's not safe, folks. Absolutely not safe. It's too close. There's a guardrail there now. We've had cars down over the bank before they put the guardrail up. Cars have been down over there. That section of road is famous for black ice. I've lived on it for fifty-five years. It's famous for black ice. It's just not a safe place to be putting townhouses. You've got a whole bunch of places if you think you need more townhouses, although I have a question about that, is how do, I thought the campus zoning didn't allow residential. I mean, if you read the zoning, the first thing is acceptable uses, residential, none. Now, you go down further and you read these accessories, if they're accessories, you can have certain things that are accessories to the permitted primary use, which I don't know what the primary use on this anymore is. Can you all tell me? There used to be a old folks' home that was gonna be built there. When we, when they put in the zoning, I remember explicitly that the board of supervisors said this is the best of all worlds. You're gonna have an old folks', a hundred and fifty-bed home, and there'll be no schooling, that we have to school the kids, and we'll get money, unlike from a hospital, maybe. So what is the, the primary facility now on this?
One of the future zones is medical office buildings, and that's the principal use in this situation.
At the time it was presented, that, that home was the, the primary permitted use. Others were accessory properties, and I know that particularly because they had to come back and change the height restrictions on that building because it was gonna be an accessory. And you went from four to five stories allowed on accessory buildings in the campus zone. And that because it was no longer the primary building. Now, my understanding is they're not gonna build any medical buildings in here anymore. But I don't know what, do you all know what's gonna be built in the rest of the phases? You? I don't, I mean, you don't have to... Well, I...
If you want, I mean, the plans still show the medical office buildings.
Yeah, I know it does. But I know one other time I was talking to the board supervisors, and they said that one probably could happen. But it's a business area, so they can build a lot of different businesses that are permitted in the campus zone, right? But we have no primary facility on the east side. You got the hospital on the other side, but we have nothing here anymore. But anyway, I mean, we, I have no idea how we get uses for a hundred and fifty apartments and twelve townhouses. But either way, there, my original contention is that a setback of twelve point five feet is ridiculous. I mean, the, the lot originally was gonna be forty-five. The campus zone says, what, twenty-five? But the developer said he'll give us seventy-five feet from the center line of the road, which amounts to what the thirty feet would be forty-five. That was the original. That's, that's on here. You can see it over here, seventy-five from the center, which amounts to a setback of forty-five.
Well, and in this instance, the existing house is non-conforming for setbacks. They're allowed to continue that as long as they don't encroach any closer.
Why they're leaving that house there, I guess, so they could use it.
At the loud.
Because building around that house, I have no idea why they're saving that whole place. But other than the fact that if you've got a non-conforming use, you can come back in and build eight more that are just as bad, I don't, I don't think that's wise. I really don't. It's surely not safe. That's something you all have to digest. But I mean, I was there the other day and pulled right in front, and I mean, cars are whizzing right by there, and I'm sure the state sometime or another is gonna wanna either increase it to three lanes. It's this narrow section between the three lanes at the hospital and the three lanes on down at Sylvan Road. Or they'll at least increase the shoulder for bike traffic because we have no, no bike path or anything up along the road. They've resisted that from the whole time. They don't wanna put any walking path or anything. It's all down over the hill. Now, it's down over the retaining wall. And that was one other question I had. I don't wanna take it all the time. We did have one time a road, a path that went from Harrisburg Pike to join that path. Where is it now?
On the sidewalk from the parking area, it comes up to serve the units. But I think the idea would be if someone's riding a bike, it's gonna be easier to come down the driveway, head on that way, rather than have a separate sidewalk.
In other words, you can, you can drive down their entrance road and walk the same way? Because at one time the walkway was, before this was all put in there, the walkway joined from, it was the only chance we had from Harrisburg Pike to get down, down the path.
Yeah, we thought this was safer in PennDOT. It was probably gonna have an issue with this having the sidewalk stub out. So I think...
I'm pretty sure they would, too. I'm surprised they don't have an issue with that, that sidewalk there right off the shoulder. I mean, now this sounds dumb for me, but the front of these is facing Sora Run or facing the road?
No, so the, the front here is gonna be facing Harrisburg Pike. There'd be a garage and the rear of all.
Okay. So the, so the people are gonna be entering from this twelve and a half feet off the right-of-way?
No, all traffic will come in here, and cars will come from the rear.
Well, there is front doors on this, right?
Yeah, that would just be for pedestrians.
That's, that's what I'm talking about. I'm worried about the people out in the front door getting, getting the car. Okay. That, that was just some of my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? If so, I'll take a motion.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Oh, yes.
Nate, the, the setback, can, do you know what the setback requirement is and how it's worded in the zoning ordinance from the standpoint of an existing structure and its setback and any adjacent structure and how far away? How long do they have the right to continue that setback?
There's, there's nothing that really says a distance, how far they can continue it, as long as they don't further encroach.
So it, a mile down the road, somebody could be up close and you could do this?
Be on that parcel.
It has to be on that parcel, okay.
But in effect, they could build the entire rest of the length of that property.
Theoretically, they could.
Up to the road that comes in behind sheets if they chose to.
Well, there is a residential density requirement associated with this, too, so. There's other hiccups, but...
So I'm trying to visualize like Florn Hill up there in Mount Chuy Way. Trying to, that's probably only fifteen feet from the road where they built those homes. Gives it more like a city kind of feel.
Excuse me. I think that's more what you call village, the village thing, which we have in our building, too, but we don't have one fifty mile an hour.
Actually, I think it's posted thirty-five. It's posted thirty-five on, in that section of, I know nobody drives it. But, right, but...
Hopefully, hopefully as they get more development, and it's coming here, all these people pulling out and stuff, it'll slow it down, but I don't know. That's up to the state, right?
Yeah, and this... So the slope of that driveway, you've done about all you could to minimize that coming out onto the road there?
Yeah, I mean, we, we feel we have and will, you'll work with PennDOT if they have further comments on, on that. But as far as the slope, there's, there's not a whole lot we can change to be able to get down to.
I mean, it's quite a drop-off there and...
Lower entry. Essentially, it's gonna be, you know, like a walkout basement at the rear where you have your garage, so that's part of the idea to get down to that level.
And that can be appealing in the market, people like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, that was the idea to provide that off-street parking, covered parking as well in a garage space.
Can I ask one more question? If, if they were to tear that building down, the old house, which is, is it the last amendment? Would they be able to get the townhouses back to the, what is required of the campus zone in this space, which is twenty-five feet? Would you be able to get it in there, then?
Not with the same architecture we're using right now.
Five feet. They're leaving the house to be able to, to put up eight more beds at the size.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'll take a motion, please.
And I'll make a motion, as much as I'm not a huge fan of this plan, I think it's probably the best we can do with what's there. It's narrow and steep. I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications one through six and conditional approval of modifications seven and eight, subject to staff and engineer comments and understanding that PennDOT has to get their approval yet.
I have a motion from Mr. Rohr.
I'll second it.
Second from Mr. Caldwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed.
And I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of the final plan, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second it.
I have a final plan motion from Mr. Rohr with a second by Mr. Caldwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thanks.
Henfield School District Master Plan.
Yes, good evening. My name is Hugh Kads. I'm a registered landscape architect with ELA Group. With me tonight is, we have Bill Brosman, who's the principal at the high school, Mike Bromerisky, who's the district superintendent, Matty Landis, who is a representative of the construction manager, and Scott Sullivan, who is with the architecture firm that's working on the project. What we have before you tonight is submission of a master plan, but most importantly is asking for a waiver of the preliminary plan process. I just wanted to touch base and kind of go over this, what we're doing here in generalities. I'm hoping this will work on the screen. Currently, this is the existing campus that I think you're probably all familiar with. Or is this, is that the?
This is...
If you go, yeah. That's the existing campus. This is the high school. And as you may or may not be aware, there's, this was always, has been always called Buchanan, and that's Franklin. Existing varsity baseball field with all the parking around it. So the proposed projects, the majority of the work is focused on, on this side of Kaufman Road. But in support of the project, there's a couple other things that are gonna be going on that are gonna be occurring south of Kaufman Road. And it's all tied in to, we're gonna be looking at, and you'll see in the proposed plan about a parking area there because the new building, when you see the next plan, is we need to relocate the baseball field softball field, which is gonna be renovated. We also have the existing stadium. We're currently the, currently the existing concession stand slash bathroom is woefully inadequate for the amount of seats at the stadium. Also, both grandstands currently do not meet, do not meet current code. Also, the press boxes are outdated, and one on the home site is probably half the size it actually should be. Then the other thing, too, is part of the renovations, again, you'll see on the next sheet, is there is the steam plant up here, which actually stores some equipment, so we're gonna be, there's also what the school's proposing is to move a maintenance building down there. All right, next one, Nate? Okay, all, everything is, essentially what this is is more of a relocation and renovation project. Most every, everything that we're doing here is currently on campus, and it's either being renovated or being relocated. As you see last, in the last slide, this area up here was where the Franklin Wing was. Now that's gone and replaced by the new addition here. The parking, the parking for the students and staff will be located up in here. We're currently, they're scattered down over here at the quad or at the stadium, stadium parking area. No, no change is gonna happen to Mumaw Drive here. That's gonna stay as well as the drive that goes on beyond the administration building and the Langster Education Center. South of Kaufman Road, this is what we're now calling the band parking lot. Currently, the band practice is up here, and it's desired to get them down over here away from the neighborhood up, up here, also get them more central to the, central to the campus. Varsity baseball field that was here is being relocated. This used to be the old Landisville Intermediate School Center, Is being relocated. This used to be the old Landisville Intermediate School Center. Uh, which has now this currently is two is basically a athletic field. It's going to be renovated to the varsity baseball field. The field hockey and everything that was here is just simply going to use this existing athletic field at here. As part of the new renovations, the baseball. Also, the softball field is going to be renovated with better dugouts, ADA access and the like. Uh, the stadium here, again, the new press box. Uh, the new ADA improvements to the grandstand, same over here. The new fieldhouse would be here, which will get the bathrooms, facilities up to code. Uh, then. Over here, it was where the new maintenance building is going to go. This is essentially going to be equipment storage with. Uh, one bathroom and a wash wash station. Uh, where currently, right now, these these facilities are up here at the garages of the steam plant. So again. This is, you know, looking at renovating and relocating. Uh, the high school currently has been built in essentially three stages for the fifty seventies and nineties. So the last time the high school was was touched was, I think, in the early ninety ninety three. Uh, and since then, the site used to be zoned residential, but since it's been zoned campus. So this is actually the first master plan for the campus. Uh, over the years, you know, various things have been added in recent years. Uh, the school district has started. I was talking to the to Dr. Bromerisky here since twenty nineteen. They've been going through feasibility study and analysis, looking at all the different prototype elementary schools. And bottom line, the thought was has been if anything needs renovated, they have to focus on the high school. So again, uh, the purpose for us here tonight is kind of just touch base on the master plan, but again. Uh, asking for a waiver of the preliminary, uh, Mr. Hayne had recommended approval conditioned on. On everything being developed at at one time. Uh, that's what's being proposed. The only thing we had to touch base with, uh, with Mr. Hayne on at the time is what you could see, uh, the tennis court up here. Uh, that's not going to happen because currently the school district has a has a contract with Hemfield Rec and it's actually, uh, actually preferred to. Maintain that because it's a better facility. And the these actually, these are five courts now are sufficient for practice, but. Six courts, uh, six courts, uh, will that would be better, but again, the Hemfield Rec contract seems to be more appealing. The other things too, which you can't aren't really evident on the plan, uh, the parking lot, the stadium parking lot, which for years. Uh, has always been a safety concern. They're going to add lighting on here. And, uh. These lights, which that one light in particular has been humming for probably about twenty years, is going to be replaced with a new LED type light system, which will be more direct. So you will not be seeing the glare glow as you. If you drive down Church Street like I have many a times at night, you know, the fields are being used, so. Um, that's and and also potentially eventually with the quad as well. So. That's kind of the whole overview in a nutshell, uh, what we're doing here. Uh, again, we have people here if you have a question or two. But primarily, we were taking a look at the at the waiver of the preliminary assess. Oh, let me. And one thing too, we did have talk base with township township staff twice. We talked to the traffic engineer. He's identified thirteen intersections. Lot of them are on campus. Um, to do traffic studies. So the first week, the first full week in September, there'll be. Uh, cameras out in the old days, they used to have someone there counting them. There'll be cameras out. We did reach out to Pendott, uh, and asked if they for a scoping meeting, they have indicated that what the township's requiring is sufficient. If we need anything at Bank and Church or Kaufman and Church, at that time, we would work with the township to whatever upgrades. Would be necessary there, but we have. We do have thirteen thirteen intersections. Um. Again, a lot of them are like on on campus, like on Muma Drive, like, you know, in here. So it's all kind of, you know. Anyone been there at a football game? We all know what happened, so, you know, so, uh. Or at the end of school and the students. But I guess that's pretty much it. If there's any questions of with of anybody, I mean, uh, we're here. Uh, the schools had done a lot of reaching reaching out, uh, to the townships. Um, merchandiser, I know the one that came out in the thirtieth has an article, uh, in it. Uh, the school website has you scroll down, it's in the bottom. A newsletter. If you receive the newsletter, there's a QR code in front that takes you right to the webpage. It provides you all the renderings and information if you had any. Um, right now, the focus of obviously is the budget. A lot of things are going through the process now of VEing. Value engineering, so that's, uh, that's where we are right now, so.
Will. Will any of this design change bus routes?
The actually, the plan is I, uh, do you either you want to speak to it or? Oh, no, come with us.
You're talking about the bus routes on campus?
Yes, will they be leaving up past Franklin now because Franklin's on or, you know, those type of things, just to see if it'll affect residents in a different way?
So current. Let's either use this mic. So currently, um, all the buses are on this side of the building. And currently, the buses drop off in the morning and they exit up this way. And in the afternoon, they line up and they exit up this way. With this new design, what we're working out is that because the, um. The buses drop off down here at the middle school in the morning, they come to the high school, that would all stay the same. So that bus traffic would stay the same in the morning. In the afternoon, um, we're we're designing it so that the buses will actually. Come in from Stanley and and they'll line up pretty much on this side. And this side and they'll exit. South. Um, rather than exit north because we have more parking lot north. Uh, we want to get the bus traffic moving south. And the way where the high school, where our campus is located in the district anyway, most of our buses need to head. East and south versus north anyway, so that will get the buses off of these intersections in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Any other question? I don't guess you don't have any other questions. I'll take a motion.
And I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plan waiver request. The Hamfield School District Landisville Campus Master Plan Project Township File twenty five dash oh eight dot oh one. Condition on all improvements depicted on their master plan be implemented through one final plan and subject to all staff and engineering comments.
I'll second.
Thank you, Josh. I have a motion by Mr. Caldwell with a second by Mr. Boltby. For approval. Of the Hamfield. School District Master Plan prelim. It's a preliminary plan waiver. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on the August project update or any comments, Nate? Anything to discuss?
Yeah, I had a question when I was reading the project update for the. The what's the name of the golf Evergreen Golf Course there? I saw they were granted a subdivision?
They're applying for one.
They're applying for a ten acre subdivision.
Within the next couple of months.
Okay, it's not a lot add on that they're adding that.
No, they're, uh. Chopping off ten acres where the residential property is.
Yeah, the old farm buildings that are mostly parking lot for roots now.
Yeah.
So that's going to be interesting because. Don't we limit our subdivisions in the ag zone to two acres or less?
No, you can, uh.
Hmm, that was a big part of drafting that one, so. I think it limits it to two acres or less.
So I I think the intent of that. Was for solely a. Residential unit I there justification, I believe. Is that that ten acres is the minimum size for a farm. Whether they're actually farming there.
Mm hmm. Um. Yeah, we'll have to look at that. I don't think. So when the ordinance was drafted, there was concern about. The number of ten acre. Properties that were getting created because we were wasting sort of space with those ten acre house lots.
You know, for for so many acres, you're allowed to subdivide off one acre.
Yeah, for every twenty acres, you can subdivide once and the lot can only be up to two acres. So because it runs into like if DEP says you. You can't put a septic system on because the acreage is too small. Then we've had people had to do septic easements onto a neighbor property and things like that.
Look at that. It's it was just submitted, uh. Think a week or two ago, we're still.
Okay. I mean, it makes sense for that site. I just am concerned about setting a precedent. Because I could see a lot of people applying for ten acre subdivisions.
General cleaning green to keep.
It is. That's right.
Taxes. So a lot of people shoot for that ten acres for that reason alone.
That's why, but except we were getting quite a few. We have a number of those ten acre ones.
Yep.
And it was sort of wasting.
Yep.
A lot of space for a ten acres in a house. So if you go down Stevens Street, there's a number of them and. Um, some are some on Junction Road and so forth, so. So that I I just am concerned. Check the ordinance, but I don't think they can do a ten acre subdivision. Now, if they did a lot add one, that would make me much more comfortable. Because then they'd be adding a lot. They'd be adding the land onto the roots tract. Which is really what they should do. So anyway.
Bisected by. By whatever road's right there.
That it's road there, yeah. So but in essence, there if there if that's what their application is, they're they're subdividing the farm buildings off the tract. Do we want people to do that?
So I haven't looked at it too much yet. Well. Well, we'll see if they're they're meeting the ordinance requirement.
Yeah.
And then, uh. Nick over at DMA also reviews the zoning stuff and. He's pretty sharp with our ordinance, so.
Yeah, good. That's the only thing. I just saw that on there. I thought I don't think they can do that. Um, so. Very good.
Anything else, anybody? Okay, we'll adjourn at eight oh two.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And it's kind of a whole night.
Hmm?
For a loaded.